Okay, six o'clock is the time to call the order at the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission. At this time, we're standing for invitation, the Flat Department, they're going to do our invitation, and Miss Graham will do our plate.
About with me? Father God, first off, tonight, we just ask that you join us, Father, in this meeting, Father God. We ask that you guide us and direct us, Father. We ask that decisions that are made tonight, Father God, be done with wisdom and prudence, Father God, and it will be a blessing to all the citizens of this community, Father. We just pray for your grace, favor, and peace. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Before we start tonight, we've got a pretty good crowd here, and we want this to run as smooth as possible. So, as Chairman of this Planning Commission, I make a motion that all public comments be limited to three minutes.
Second.
I have a session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, when you're called to speak tonight, you come to the podium, state your name, and have things. We won't have, we won't accept any talking. People stand up from the audience, and stuff like that, go to talk, and back and forth. We expect to keep, if we run as smooth as possible tonight. Let the record show everybody.
We were all meeting here.
At this time, number three, I hear a motion with approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, approval of meeting minutes prior to meeting December 30th, we'll have to do these separately.
I'll make a motion that we approve the December 30th, 2019 minute.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Island B, prior meeting, January 14, 2020.
Your motion for approval.
My motion for approval, January 14.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, flat approvals. I'll turn this over to Robert.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. For the flat approvals, PC 021120, SP 1, a proposal for a flat approval, final flat approval was submitted to my office, and that's what is listed on the agenda for Sugar Creek area, section three, involving section three. Owner Art Seadman, of course, nobody here is in representation tonight, provided the engineer or owner, because at this point in time, the staff would recommend that the planning commission defer this item. The construction documents are not complete. We are reviewing those as we speak. They have made a third submission to our office. We just haven't had, had the amount of time to take those under review. So, we're asking the planning commission defer this item until following planning commission meet, and if we get that reviewed, any comments, any replies, that, any corrections may need to be made, we can have it ready and prepared for the planning commission.
You're good.
There's quite a bit of comments back, and they didn't give you until Thursday, Friday, and last week, so we just want time to look at it. I make a motion that we defer the flat approvals to the management.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor who turn this flat approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Then, motion carries. Number six, rezoning request.
Okay. As the Commission sees, we've got one item on there. It's PC 021120, RZ 1. Owner Barrett Properties, Justin Robinett, has submitted a rezoning request in regards to property located at the intersection of Clark and Main Street. Better known as 504, that's the physical address. It is recorded on D book, R2586, page 1017, flat book 19, page 240. Further identified as tax map 133J parcel 033. The reason this request is for the board tonight, currently, the lot under consideration is owned to R1 Low Density Residential, and the owner and developer, I think, I know one of them's here tonight.
Here.
Really? Okay. Are proposing to, or are asking, requesting that it be rezoned to R3, which is high density, to allow for more single-family dwellings to be built on that. And the package that I received from the owner and the developer indicated three single-family lots. I do have that in the slide, and if you give me a few minutes, I can go open it up and read the description of it.
Okay.
All right. Just a sec. on the other side there. That's the lot under consideration tonight. And the last known structure that I knew to be on that was a single-family residence. I think it's converted into apartments, it's already. So, that's, of course, been gone for quite a period of time, and it's an eight lot. This is presentation package that was sent in from the developer and the owner. And once again, Mr. Brian Deek is here, representing the developer and the owner of this project, so if the planning commission has any questions, he's certainly here to answer any questions in regards to this particular drawing, and then that as well. The lot we're talking about is situated on three different sides, I believe, by R1 Low Density Residential. Then, on one, on the remaining side, it's R3, which is the apartments, area East Second.
The very south side, yeah.
South side, okay. So, yeah. The apartments, just the planning commission here, the apartments are right here, this is the lot situated, as you see, and then around is R1 Low Density. So, that's the proposal before the board, is the owner is requesting a rezone only, this is not a site plan, or anything to that effect, and simply requesting that that property be rezoned from low-density to high-density, which would allow for additional structures beyond just a single-family dwelling to be built on that lot.
So, we should have, like, the residential tract again, all of it, and can afford to that.
That request was for commercial business.
We've been rezoned.
It was asking for a different zoning, but yes, we did have that in front of you, correct?
We did. That is correct. And it was in.
We locked the, we've seen how it's treated there.
And this is, like Kate said, this is a slightly different zoning request, because before it was trying to go from low-density residential to commercial. Now, it's low-density residential to high-density residential, so you have that distinction that you can make. Also, as Robert stated, this is just a rezoning request. So, even though these plans have been submitted to you, that's not what's being considered today. You're considering, overall, is this property better situated for residential, low-density residential, or high-density residential? And so, that, and I've given you two printouts from the zoning ordinance, which state what you need to consider when you are considering a rezoning application. So, the one that has, starts with 4-15 at the bottom, section D on, in that packet, is the findings of facts that need to be considered for zoning amendments. So, when you're hearing public comments today, these are the items that need to be considered when you're making a decision.
You want to say those?
Oh, yeah, I can read them out loud for you. The planning commission, in its review and recommendation, and the Mount Pleasant Commission, in its deliberation, shall make specific findings with regard to the following grounds for an amendment. Number one, the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area. Number two, there will be no adverse effect upon adjoining with property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. Number three, that no property owner or small group of property owners will be, will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. And number four, conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan and subsequently the zoning map. So, that's supposed to be your focus when you're deliberating today, not whether this particular plan is appropriate. You're considering whether this property is better suited for high-density or low-density residential.
Which, what's the upper limit of R3? I mean, like, if we're not assuming it's being three single-family residences, what...
It encompasses duplexes, triplexes, single-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings.
Towns.
Towns. That's what R3 encompasses.
Does it include apartments?
Multifamily.
Yeah.
Yeah. Multifamily. I mean, it's the highest density, of course.
Right.
So, that's why it's all inclusive of all dwelling units. It goes down any minimum lot size requirements, as you well know. Setbacks are lower than what they would be in your R1 and R2. So, it just allows the owner of that property to make utilization of the entire lot of dwelling units. And I did, just so the planning commission knows, I did send out several notices within a 200-foot radius of said property. I received several of them back as having been signed for, so not all of them were signed for.
Right.
But there was notice made specifically to the process in regards to the lot situation.
In the paper as well.
In the paper as well. And also, once again, I'll just reiterate that Mr. Deek is here, if the board has any questions for him.
I don't. At the time, we do have a couple of people that signed up and to speak on the agenda out of number two, and at this time, you know, we'll let them speak, then we'll have the question.
Okay.
Are you going to let the applicant speak first, or just go straight to the public?
I would think absolutely, the applicant, sure.
Okay. It's okay, Mr. Deek.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I do intend to do three residential still-family lots on this. And I think if you guys look back through your, through your zoning, you'll see that anything above a single-family will come back through your design review commission. What I'm asking for is almost double the size of the minimum lot requirements for a single-family there, so, and it will come back as a plat through you guys also after, if it is rezoned. My intentions is to build, build three single-family homes there to, you know, have a combined shared driveway between them in the back. As you can see, one's facing the two, are facing Main Street. As far as, you know, size of home, I'm looking to 18 to 23, 400 square foot, you know, something that's kind of single entry, that's going to help a 55 and older person. Three slabs is what I'm trying to do, and build, you know, as easy entry as possible. And that's basically it. If you guys have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No, I don't have any. I don't, I, I don't. I'd say it's just a rezoning consideration right now. Things change, you know, the flat has to come back to up here, but.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Brian.
Thank you.
You've got the chair, so I guess if...
At this time, we've got a couple of people that signed up. The first one is Kenneth Anderson.
Hi, I'm the property director across the street from this property, and, you know, one, I have a question, are these houses going to be rental properties, or are they going to be built and sold? And another is, you know, this whole area is, except for the one existing apartment complex, is all historic, large historic homes, and I don't see how you can get free houses on one of these small lots to, you know, look right with all our historic homes that we have here, which is a great benefit for the city, I believe. So, I'm worried about property values going down and just ruining the whole area. That's all I've got.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank you. Brian, fine, Steve?
Yep. Thank you all for hearing. I'm at 507 North Main, just a few doors down from the house he's talking about, basically. But, right now, we are from Nashville, we've been there four years, but this is happening all over Nashville, and if you ask neighbors, they hate it. The only people that really like it are the builders. You know, they're from those neighborhoods, some of the so classic homes, and this is our fear here, is that, you know, nobody that I've talked to foresee, build a big house, beautiful backyard, beautiful front yard, build a half a million dollar house, make the house look like a vintage home, it would be more advantageous for the historic part, and fit in, you know. If you're going to spend the money, do a, do a half a million dollar house. But when you look at the way it's laid out, it'd be a beautiful backyard, sitting back, front yard, but every, we moved from Nashville, and we just saw it happening everywhere, you know? And neighbors just hated it, and they really couldn't do anything about it. They just tore down the old houses and put up skinny houses. And so, that's our fear, just like his. It's going to change the whole look. I'm right in the heart of the historic district, and we want to maintain that. So, if you, you know, if my house was gone, burned down, I'd want to build a house back that looks vintage and fit in. I think that's what the neighbors would basically want. That's what we're wanting to advocate, you know? Let the, let the owner build a house, make some money on it, but fit in to everybody's historic look of the house, you know? So, that's all I got to say, basically.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else?
Uh, no, that's only two to, on that particular one there, and especially among the mission.
Well, I mean, my concern is that, really, this is of no, this immaterial is of no consequence for what we're considering.
Right.
It's an idea.
Right.
An idea being, when it is, they change. We've got nothing, nothing set in stone as to what the future will be there. Potentially could approve that law as a high-density lot, and then end up with something much different.
It will be a sell.
Yeah. So, that's one concern.
Do you have? I agree, sir. So, that's very close. All right, I am tying motion. I have a motion again.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request.
I have a motion that we deny the request. I say it. In fact, we're going to roll call this, please.
Mr. Gregory?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Need to help me?
Yes.
Do you have any reason for more lists you add due minutes? I have to say, have any reasons from the list to add to this minute? That should be kind of pointed out in your motion of, if you can expound on that area.
Well, I don't think conditions that are in the area have, have changed in a sufficient manner to, to the extent of warrant of change in the zone. I also am not convinced that it's in agreement with the land use plan for the area. And I think we have evidence that there could possibly be adverse effect on neighboring property.
We just need to consider the reasons why.
Sure.
Number seven, any section request.
There are none.
Number eight, site plan approval request. Give this to Robert.
Commissioners and members of the community here, we do have a site plan approval request, PC 021120, SP 1. The owner of property located 7249 Hoover Mason Road, which is at the intersection of Hoover Mason Road and Hoover Mason Lane, the owner of TAP, SSC, Hoover Mason Recycling, has a proposal for a site plan request for the board for the commission tonight in reference to landfill sites located at that address. The proposed landfill development will increase the permitted landfill areas from 39 acres to 75 acres. Additionally, the existing office, the check collection tanks, and sediment basin will be relocated from southern portion of property, from Hoover Mason to the west side. There is also identified on the plan a height increase of approximately 60 feet beyond what the, what they had been initially approved for back in 2011. And that's in at least three specific locations, almost center of what was identified on the site plan proposed. So, you would have a periphery increase in size, and then a possible height increase as well. We have engineering, Mr. Nancy, I think, from Triad is here present, as are members from HMR, TAP, Smelter, that are, are representation of the applicant that are here to speak in detail to any questions, concerns that the commission may have. Once again, this is a site plan review, it's not a rezone, and we have, we have a Mr. George Dean here with us tonight, that I would like to turn it over to him, if it's okay with the planning commission, and everything is found upon the duties of the planning commission of what we're here for tonight. He's a highly, he's an expert in the field of land use planning, and he can give you any information that the board is here for. He's here for y'all and the public, and he can answer any questions if you have. So, at this time, I'd just like to turn the table over to him and let him speak to the nature of the board.
Good evening. As Robert said, my name is George Dean. I work in the field of land use planning and zoning law, pretty much is all I do, working at a firm in Nashville. Just for the benefit of both the planning commission and everybody in the room, we just heard an application for a zoning change, and when you've got an application for a zoning change, there's a lot of discretion that both the planning commission has and the city commission. There's really not much by way of restrictions on what the planning commission meant to the city commission on a zoning change, or for that matter, what the city commission can do by way of deciding on a zoning change. The board just recommended against the zoning change that was submitted, but again, the commission and the city commission could look at it and decide whichever way it wanted to go, essentially, consistently, what you think is right for the city. Site plan review is what we have here tonight, and that's a different kind of animal from a zoning change. Site plan review has a set of requirements that the applicant tries to come forward to you with to demonstrate that they meet those requirements in your zoning ordinance, and your job is to decide whether or not they meet those requirements, and if they do, there's really not much discretion to turn down the application. If they don't meet the requirements contained in the zoning ordinance, then certainly you can turn them down, and you should turn them down. But this is not a zoning change, where you do have that vast discretion to go whichever way you think is right. In this particular instance, the zoning ordinance kind of restricts your discretion, and you need to just look at those provisions. And again, if the applicant meets those requirements, then you've got to approve. If they don't meet the requirements, then you wouldn't approve the application. I, if you've got any questions or anything, that's really the simplest way to talk about it. I had to suggest, and I didn't know exactly what your process is, many planning commissions do things a little bit differently, and you're very consistent with what I've practiced in front of, but have the applicant come forward, then if there's anybody in support of the application in addition to the applicant themselves, have them speak, folks in opposition, and then turn it over to the board to make a decision about what you think is right under these circumstances. I'll mention that there is a provision in the zoning ordinance about making a decision within 60 days. The application was deferred from last month, I think at the request of the applicant. Probably, though, tonight, probably need a decision because of that 60-day requirement in the zoning ordinance. So, with that, might just turn it over to the applicant, if that's what the commission would like to do.
It'd be fine. I'd like to hear both.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Clark Spoden, also like Mr. Dean and Lloyd from Nashville, and I appreciate you all hearing us tonight. As you all may know, I know Ms. Graham knows, I've been involved with this particular endeavor for a long time. I stood before this group in, the first time I stood before this group was in 2006, so it's been a long time. One thing I want to point out, that Mr. Archibald said this is just slightly in error, the height increase is 32 feet. The original final developer plan height was 76, you know, that's from sea level, and the site plan amendment requests that the height be okayed at 808, so that's 32 feet. 808 minus 76 is 32. My math is right. It's also, I hope that Mr. Archibald would share with you, and maybe Mr. Dean can confirm this, but it's my understanding that the planning department here at the city has extensively reviewed the site plan approval, the site plan amendment, TAP and Smelter have submitted. In fact, it's been through several rewrites at the, at the past to the planning department. And it's my understanding that it meets with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance for a site plan amendment like this. So, I think, in terms of what Mr. Dean just said, in terms of whether it fits with what's required by your zoning ordinance, it does. And that's what I've been told by, by my client, is Mr. Archibald reporting, and that's what Mr. Dean told me earlier today. So, it's my understanding that your planning department has reviewed it and found that it meets with all the requirements that they had a consultant... it meets with all the requirements that they had a consultant who also reviewed at your expense of that and also your counsel, Mr. Dean, has reviewed. It's my understanding that it meets with the change requirements. Simply stated, the property that's been zoned for a landfill, on that property, the only thirty-nine acres have been used as a landfill. And that's because really that's what the permit application submitted to TDEC was for. Times have gone on and they need more space and so this request, I see Ms. Graham has it open to the page, simply asks that all of the property that's been zoned for a landfill be allowed to be used for that zone purpose. So it's not asking for an increase of any outside of the boundaries of the existing approved zone space. It's just asking to use all of it. And then there's some nuances, the movement of the settlement basin from one part of the property to the other. I don't think there's any controversy about that. So, any questions?
I've got a question. I wasn't sure what it was originally.
Yes, I understand.
Why didn't they do the whole seventy-five acres the first time? Why come back now? Obviously you knew that we're not, that we're not still being business, but why?
Well, we hoped they were going to be in business. I don't know that either.
If permitted for seventy-five, why would you have done that?
Right. You know, we were talking about that earlier today and that is something I should know. But I am drawing a blank on that. I think part of it was an estimate as to how long they would need. And certainly, the companies are not in need of a vast increase at this moment. Remember, we started this process in two thousand and six and it was finally approved in two thousand and eleven, so it took five years to get to that spot. So if we start this request today, hopefully, right, in three to five years maybe, we'll be in a place where we can use it. But they're not in the position of needing to use it now. So it's really just for the long-term planning to go ahead and get approved a process because they have to go to TDEC next. They start here, they go to TDEC. I can't answer your question as to why we didn't ask for the whole space at the original time, but I know that they've grown faster than they expected. Business has been better than they expect. In two thousand and eight, you know, we're worried about the future of the companies at all. So now both are doing well and business is good and so there, that causes there to be more waste that needs to be put into the landfill. And so it's filled up a little faster than expected. Yes? Say again?
Why higher?
Why higher than the original seven seventy-six? Just to have more airspace. I mean frankly, the thirty-two foot higher will basically add another, I think the statistic is one point seven million cubic yard area of space and it just extends the life of the landfill. Say again? Oh, well, I understand there was a meeting last week with the airport authority. I was not there, but I have seen what was presented and it-
You should have that in front of you.
Well, that's the letter that the airport authority wrote to you, but that's not the imaginary space. Under the FAA guidelines, there's a, you have to plot out an imaginary space and we have a slide somewhere that shows you how, under even with the eight oh eight elevation, the landfill will not intrude into the airport's fly zone. That's a good word, fly zone. You'll see this red line on this picture in a minute and that'll show it to you.
Would that increase height in any way limit their ability to expand or change layout?
It shouldn't.
And you do have a member of the airport board here, just so you know, that can talk to that.
Certainly, as I mentioned, that you would approve a site plan that would permit the companies to get a change in their permit in TDEC that ten years from now, my ultimate, gosh, under this absolute height, we're probably talking twelve to fifteen years, maybe seventeen to twenty years from now might reach that height. And I've been, doesn't mean to necessarily go there, certainly if it violated the airspace, then the airport authority would have the power to see that it not, we not go that high.
Do we know what the limiting factor was? What was the factor that determined that limiting height on the first page?
Well, part of that is always going to be just physics, right? I mean, it's not, it's not a square. It's a hill. And so, you know, it has to have certain slope requirements. TDEC has a slope obligation, a requirement to keep it at a certain slope. And so if you have a thirty-nine acre box, that thirty-nine acre box can only go so high and be within the permitted slope. Does that answer your question?
I believe so.
Yeah.
What's the life expectancy if the expansion is approved? Based on current production number?
Right. With the eight oh eight, I'm going to have to be sure to confirm this. You think twenty years?
Twenty plus.
Twenty plus? Twenty plus years.
On my claim, it's not the same. Just to, from that standpoint, there's a lot of variables. You get a production and different variables that go along with that, so the way we've looked at it is airspace, cubic yards of airspace is kind of the way we've looked at it. But based on where we're at today, that puts us in that range. And so it's a range.
So the height that you're requesting is?
Eight oh eight. That's what's in the package that was submitted and approved by the planning department. I believe it's in that. It's what Ms. Graham's looking at right there. If you look at the page, it's hard to read because it's so small. Very hard to read, but it's just, if I can step forward.
I've actually got it. You talking about site plan? I've actually got it here.
Okay. I just wanted to show some, let me see on there. It's on this particular page. It's before those pages in the book. Oh, I think it's that. Number in the middle of the calculation. You see that eight? Okay.
Just to make the planning commission clear here, and I apologize for the, when we reviewed the site plan, I want y'all to understand that we're reviewing not the final grade, but we're reviewing what they've got now. So the sixty-foot, approximately sixty-foot that I said earlier was based off of our review. What Mr. Spoden is saying is the final that was approved back in two thousand and eleven under the development plan was seven seventy-six. So I was correct, yet he is correct. I just wanted to clear that up. So what we were, what we were looking at is what you're looking at.
Right.
And by the elevation that's shown at the current site, that's the difference in numbers that you see, not the final grade.
Are they requesting seven seventy-six or eight oh eight?
They're requesting eight oh eight.
The seven seventy-six is already approved.
It's already been approved.
We just have not built that all the way to the top.
So when we reviewed the plan, we're just seeing what current conditions are, which are not at seven seventy-six.
And that's the sixty that you were mentioning. I can understand that earlier. Thanks for clarifying that.
So does the board understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, they're twenty-eight feet under maximum right now.
That's correct, yes. And I just wanted the board and everybody else to understand that they are not at maximum height and we reviewed it under those, under that life. So we reviewed it under the current conditions.
So in answer to your question, Mr. Berry, this is the picture, you may not be able to see it, but I guess you can see it there maybe a little closer. And it shows what you call imaginary surface. And FAA requires you have to plot an imaginary surface at a certain angle from the runway. This is the concrete, the asphalt runway there at the airport. You can see that surface. And then this is, this is the eight oh eight, this red line here. And then this, you barely see it probably under, this is the seven seventy-six, where the two tonnage is in the change. As you can see, that imaginary surface is well above the eight oh eight.
I guess my concern is, you know, now that we're bringing in a lot of planes at night and you say the logic on the government, they're going to be running far, unfortunately.
I understand, I can understand your concerns and assure you that TAP and Smelter want to work with the airport authority to meet everybody's concerns. The site plan requirements in the ordinance, I don't think say, you know, that this would be part of the consideration of the site plan approval, but it's certainly something we will need to work with the airport about.
That's good.
Sure, we're going to have other comments, it sounds like.
I would like to hear from the, we said we have someone here from the airport and I would like to jump over you.
Good evening. I apologize, I really wasn't planning on having a speaking role tonight. My name is Tom Apker. I'm a member of the three-person airport authority for the Murray County Regional Airport. And while we haven't discussed directly this with the TAP and Smelter folks, although we have met with AJ about some of their preliminary joints, and fortunately we have an attorney here who's competent, there's kind of a unique conflict here or overlay, which is that they're talking about a zoning and a land use issue. And what we have are a grant assurance problem with the FAA. As you know, over the last twelve years or so, the FAA has put about twelve, thirteen million dollars of investment into our airport for us, building new taxiways and ramps and things like that. And part of that, every time, the board, one of which is appointed by Mount Pleasant, one of which is appointed by the city of Columbia, and I'm appointed by the county, we sign a grant assurance with the FAA guaranteeing that we will manage on behalf of our communities will manage the airspace in the immediate proximity of the airport to ensure that there are no obstacles. That's the FAA term, which is anything that sticks up in the air being a communications tower or flag pole or a building or even a natural obstacle is not allowed to exist within that airspace. And so there's a slight conflict between what's allowable in terms of these angles we're talking about, the airport overlay versus what the grant assurances that we've been signing on your behalf all these years in terms of maintaining clear space for air navigation, which is the key word for the FAA. Your point exactly, we have lots of cargo that land at night. Those guys need as much forgiveness as they can possibly get in case of either pilot or instrument error. And that's just the reality of it. And as we work with the FAA today, the rules are a little more stringent because we're asking need the whole runway to be rebuilt. We just reduced it up with a heavy cargo plane landing. Good forgiveness within the community, hard on the pavement. That triggers a different level of scrutiny over the airport environment than they usually do because the investment is so high. In this case, at least nine, maybe thirteen million dollars, maybe more. So all of the decisions we make today regarding the airport environment are going to impact the FAA's willingness to fund an additional thirteen million dollars or ultimately, and this is worst case, but they've done it, is they actually have the right to say, no, you screwed up, you compromised the airspace and we want all of our money back. They've actually done that to airports. You know, money's tight, they'll get it wherever they can. So we don't want to get in that position. We want to work collaboratively with our neighbors. You know, the airport wants to be a good neighbor, you know, we don't get a lot of noise complaints because we're careful about that. And we want to collaborate to the extent absolutely possible, just that at this moment in time, because of the runway, we're under extra scrutiny, there are extra requirements for us. There's a two-year planning process that's just been commissioned, it's going to cost three or four hundred thousand dollars, mostly fortunately FAA and state money, not ours, to determine exactly how to orient that runway. It might move a little to the east, it might move a little on an angle to the northeast, which is why moving the height of that landfill is almost a non-starter. And moving it closer to the primary runway is of great concern until that planning job is finished, right? Because otherwise, we don't know for sure, where that runway is going to wind up and we don't know for sure if that extension of the landfill is going to be a problem. We can ask that those studies be expedited as part of the planning process, but you know, frankly, it's the FAA. And our ability to get them to expedite and change their normal decision-making process is hard because for them, you know, the reason we do these huge studies is because you always find something and it changes what you're expecting. And right now, we're expecting to just repave the runway as she sits, but definitely on the table are analysis of moving the runway and reorienting the runway. Until we have those answers, we just don't know. That's why the airport's so concerned today is that the height of the landfill today is above what we consider the magic number of seventy-five feet above the runway, which is six hundred and fifty-one feet, is what the FAA defines as the midpoint level of the runway. That's the elevation. And so anything that penetrates seventy-five feet above that, I think you'll find in your ordinances that were passed with airport overlay in the immediate vicinity was what would cause a concern. But that's where there appears to be a difference in definition between what an obstruction is for the FAA and what you're considering a structure which you don't consider a landfill to be apparently, if I understand it right. Again, we haven't really done a lot on those points. That's a very long answer to a simple question, sir. I apologize for that, but that's fundamentally what we're grappling with today. The other tiny part of this is that while we're going to build a new runway for us, that's great, we're also trying to get them to give us a better instrument landing procedure so that it's more accurate as a guide the airplanes in, especially late at night. That's a big safety benefit for us. And the FAA is willing to pay, and that's a, almost a million dollar thing to do, and the FAA is willing to pay for most of that, ninety percent of that, for us. We'll need a little bit of help locally. There's a communications tower, I think on Mount Washington, that's going to have-
Washington Avenue.
That's going to have to move a little bit, you know, but that's really just a cash problem, which can come locally. It's not something that the FAA can pay for. But then we can bring those airplanes in with much safer approach systems than we're using today, new technology. But the requirement for being able to go lower in lower visibility is typically they want a wider area of forgiveness for those pilots. Because again, instruments fail, pilots make mistakes. And that's another thing that we just don't know about moving the landfill higher or closer to the primary runway until we've completed the studies. It's just really unfortunate timing for this comes up so concurrently. But we were just in Memphis last week talking with the FAA Airport District's Office about what we needed to do for the airport, which we didn't know about this issue at the time. Any questions at all? That was awful, I apologize.
Have you opened any meetings with the HMR?
So we have met with AJ, who's been good about coming to us. What we were focused on was he wanted to move that temporary retention pond, there's a better word for it than that, closer very long our fence line. And the quid pro quo was that, you know, some of those trees that are on that fence line, he would help us make this appear. And because we're aviation guys, we think that anything that takes stuff sticking up in the air out is a good deal. We are all for that. You know, moving that retention pond is a win for us for sure. Raising the elevation of that landfill and moving it closer to the primary runway is a real problem for us right now too. It doesn't mean that once we have the plan done and we get the FAA to approve it, they're going to have to approve it in the state and get them to commit the funding, which is probably twenty twenty-four, the funding, where we can have the plan done within a year and a half, two years, then we'll know all those answers. And, you know, we're going to be the first guys to line up and say, hey, we've got definitive course of action here and here's what we think we can do to make all the rest of that work. We just, we just can't give you those answers today because we don't know and we don't get to make those decisions.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? HMR?
I have a question. These extra acres that we're going to use, how much is coming back this way and how much is going that way?
I have a slide on that. Oh, I'm pushing the wrong way. Here we go. So this is the existing permitted part, zone for the landfill here. And that's the permitted, this is the zone part, sorry. And then this in the black is the permitted with the-
And then this in the black is the permitted, with a T that permit. And then this is what is being requested, so that the green outline on this side of the box, if you will, is the zone for a landfill part. And then the blue was the part that is permitted for the landfill, and then this is asking for the site plan to be expanded to that. So, if you can, if you see, it doesn't move it very much this way at all. And the part that was being spoken about by the person from the airport, I actually think I have a slide that shows how much that is, is moving toward the runway, obviously too much. I think it's on here. Yeah, there it is. So this is the, how much closer to that little sliver right there. And so what I was told, because this is all happening before us, I wasn't at the meeting, I didn't know really anything until that letter you guys sent us yesterday. We would be willing to amend the site plan to take out this sliver so it doesn't move closer to the airport runway in this part here. For record, it would be the northwest corner of the proposed expansion, and we'd be willing to keep the final development plan height maximum of 776 feet. If that makes sense.
So not go higher?
Not go higher than just currently.
776, then take off that little corner?
This little sliver, right.
And fill there?
Correct. Right. So we'd not go higher, we'd not get closer to the airport. Right. Right. Any other comments from the HMR? Two people here, it's time. This, first one is Liam Roddy.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your service. The city manager.
Thank you.
Since this is a site plan, I haven't much I can say, because, or a few things I'd like to say. I'm a weird, I'm not me, but me and others are against the site plan expanding any further than what it is now. Reason being, a lot of us feel like that we're, Mount Pleasant is turning into a dump. Every time we look up, we come from here and there, so not being, you asked the question of why it hasn't had to expand further than what it did. I was in part of the negotiating with these fine fellows, and we had a disagreement, but when we said that, a lot of it, the best I can remember, we figured that it was the site landfill was for TAP and SMELTER, and they would never put their drawers in there, with this acreage that we allowed in would never have filled up for years and years and years. Somehow, something changed, and I know what changed, but I'm not a part of discussing that. All of a sudden, we got a big boom from somewhere, all of a sudden, we got all kinds of stuff to put in there, so anyway, we're for jobs and stuff, I am, we all are, but a lot of us in Mount Pleasant are, when it, when they just got this 34 acres and that's 75, where's it going to ever stop? You can't just keep on and on and on, and sooner or later, somebody has got to say enough is enough. And that's what basically what we're saying, enough is enough. It happens to me every time. When I was on the commission, they had a whole little thing, I'd write it in, phones went off. So excuse me. But, I have an amendment that I'd like to attach to this request resolution. And I'm not sure that this is the place or the position to do it, but it, the resolution is a, is a give and take resolution, of which the only way we'll ever settle this will be by give and take. And, where did you go? Can I present this?
You're not, sir.
You?
Yes, sir.
Can I present this amendment?
I think you talked to the planning commission, and if you've got a suggestion, I'm sure they'd be glad to listen to it.
Well, it's kinda, what I wanted is to attach it to this as an amendment.
I know, but only the planning commission can do that. You suggested to them, and they decided.
Okay, well, I gotta go to them. I thought.
Mr. Roddy, do you have something I'm writing that you want to share with them?
Not right now, I have a, I have a trust of amendment I share with, but I would like to attach this amendment to the proper channel, whatever that he thinks.
The chairman of justice.
Well, we are concerned about the spending of this landfill. We've got people that live out there, got homes in there, a lot of money spent, and if you give you 75, what are you, you may, in other words, if you keep on, you might be on 302 Florida Avenue, that's where I live at. So, so basically, you gentlemen and ladies, lady, that when we brought all this, ladies, excuse me. But when this landfill and all this was coming on, they promised that they would plan to figure out some way to expose, to away this draw, that's what they're putting in there. And so it's went from that to apparently, and I'm not saying it because I don't know, all of a sudden, we're getting all kinds of draws coming in from other places, other states. And that's how come our landfill is filling up, and it's going to continue to fill up. And somebody's getting richer than a bull, but here is the amendment that I share with. We would like, or we could possibility, y'all have to do it, to place a tariff on every load coming into the landfill. Now, this is stuff coming in from different places, and coming into our home. And, and put that tariff on every load coming into the landfill, the rate implemented would be implemented by y'all. And the best way we probably could be done with a tractor-trailer can only haul it on state road for 100,000, 100,000 pounds that's used in that. All that 100,000 pounds, you would set a rate of maybe 10 cents, 20 cents, wherever you want, whatever you thought was, see, we're getting, we're providing the landfill, we're providing all this, we should get a share of it, we're not getting nothing, that I know of. So what we want to do is, and y'all have to set the process to being done by the commission, and, and all the revenue generated to be used for the infrastructure of Mount Pleasant.
Let me interrupt and just say, the planning commission doesn't have the power to do that.
We can hear your requests and stuff, and that's what we're limited to.
Who, who, you can talk to the city council, I'm not even sure they have the power to do that, but I'm certain that the planning commission does not.
Well, it's proposing something we can be, we can be talking about and trying to say. If you say, if I can't do this, couldn't the commission say, well, you, we're not, we're gonna shut you down?
All I can tell you.
So, I mean, you say, to say they don't have the power, they have the power skipping the road. So you do it, and I know it.
They have limited jurisdiction, and having a tariff like that is not one of their powers.
Right, but it is not to make the commission mad.
Todd, I, Mr. Roddy, we understand your request and stuff.
Okay.
Trust me, and stuff, but we want to limit it. Something like that would have to have further discussion, go to several meetings, discuss different channels and so forth, from the legal standpoint and everything, but we do hear your request.
Okay, well, that's all I want to do, the request of a tariff on stuff coming in here from out of state, that we, we should get a little of something out of it, we're a fact. The people out there are smelling the fumes, they should get something out of it.
I appreciate you.
That is what this amendment is, that's all it is.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, and I would say like this, the people that's come here, tax paying citizens, come up here and talk to y'all, tell you what their heartfelt feelings were, and you got, you got three minutes, that's not enough time. I know that, maybe that's because you let others talk, but you started out with three minutes.
You got somebody else's minutes right now. But we listen to it, and.
I'm just saying that because the three minutes, you can't really discuss much of nothing.
I understand.
So if the next time you have a meeting on this, you allow a little more, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, can I now ask a question of something that you brought up?
Sure.
So, he keeps saying that the waste is coming from lots of other places, please update us on that right there.
Tom Gorosko, SMELTER Services Corporation. We're not allowed to put anything in there unless it's coming, a byproduct of production from Tennessee Aluminum Processors of SMELTER Services Corporation. Mr. Roddy's sharing some conspiracy theories, idle speculation, it's just not true, I don't know where it's coming from. We've heard speculation that sometimes they see trucks driving with out-of-state plates turning there, that there's VLS armor over there, there's calder over there. They could be bringing stuff into Tennessee Aluminum Processors before it's processed, and then afterwards, it's allowed to go to Hoover Mason Recycling. So I think that might be the source of some of the idle speculation and conspiracy theories.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I didn't find, but I would like to, just to come ask, ask a question.
Let me get this other one to sign up.
That's fine.
This is blank and chip, and you'd be more than glad to be fine. We have Lottie Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, Mr. Spohden, we've had some spirited debate over this.
Lost some hair.
But I'm better looking. Lost hair, but I got better looking. Oh, you know, I just have a few comments about this thing, maybe you'll allow me maybe three minutes, 30 seconds. My name's Lottie Thompson, 614-618 Meadow Road. I'm a former vice-chairman of the Mount Pleasant Regional Planning Commission that was released by Mayor Cobbitt. I have many comments on this situation and have much knowledge on this subject of the landfill, but due to time constraints, I will only hit on a few at this time. I had to go back to my address, and just so, there it was. July 19, 2011, final development plan for TAP and SMELTER. If you've got any questions, it's in this book. The landfill will be owned and operated by TAP and SSC, SMELTER Services Corporation. But what worries me is currently it's operating under Hoover Mason Recycling, and that's your go-to company. I'm not a lawyer, Mr. Spohden, but that clears TAP, that clears SMELTER, you go to Hoover Mason Recycling. The property includes 95.2 acres. The estimated life of the landfill is 30 years, and is to be completed in phases. Phase 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Uh, let's see. Page 41, that is correct, page 41. Comment 112, and this is all from the state, this is not who shot John, or this is from the state. Will the byproduct from TAP and SMELTER Service be the only byproduct from, be the only byproduct from the two plants in Mount Pleasant, or will their sister plants located in places other than Mount Pleasant be allowed? The permit will only allow for disposal of waste generated at the TAP and SMELTER Services Corporation facilities located in Mount Pleasant. It says generated, it doesn't say dumped, touched, however you want to say it, it's generated from these two plants. As I think Mr. Roddy has alluded to, they're bringing the stuff in, dumping it on the ground, calling it, they're handling it, they're, it's their product, and it's being carried straight to the landfill. I've heard that many times myself. Page 46.
Can I just ask what document you're looking at, so we know, is this page 46 of which document?
The final development plan.
Okay.
TAP, SSC, Flashville Landfill, Hoover Mason Road, Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, dated July 19, 2011. I have one, one month earlier, but it is not complete, as, as complete as this one.
All right, thank you.
Oh, you're gonna get my own track here.
Sorry.
All right. This is, this is interesting part of this thing. TAP and SSC have not demonstrated that their waste is not hazardous waste. This is comment number 136. State's response is, the applicant has in fact made the required hazardous waste determination. EPA has promulgated no approved analytical methods for reactive or ignitable silage and allows for generators to use process knowledge to be used in hazardous waste determination. So they're determining if their waste is hazardous. No one else, they are. Are they gonna admit it? I don't think so. Comment number 137, the landfilling of these wastes has caused numerous problems demonstrating that these wastes are hazardous. State response, while management of salt cake has been problematic, no demonstration has been made that salt cake is hazardous, or per the rhetoric definition of the term, Tennessee Solid Waste Processing and Disposal Regulations have the category of special waste. So they're classifying this as a special waste, which applies to wastes that are difficult or dangerous to manage. And the division is of the opinion that the salt cake classified in this classification is difficult or dangerous to manage. Oh, I can tell, just to finish up here, I can tell you what's about to take place. Now, I tried to warn people in 2011, we got fired, but I'm gonna try this one more time because I've been asked to. If you vote on a landfill expansion, you will have set a precedent that the landfill is acceptable and welcome. In eight years, or sooner, we've been seven and a half in this one, plus the last 30. Let's see, what did Mr. Spohden say? I love old Spohden, I love Spohden. Times have gone on, and we need an old space. That's where we're gonna be in seven or eight more years, because we're three acres shy of the 39. But in eight years, there will be a request for further expansion, possibly on the other brownfield areas around town, and we have a lot of them because we're an old mining town. They want to go across Hoover Mason Road over into the old Stalper Mud Ponds. I mean, this thing just keeps getting bigger and bigger, because this money's been made. I understand why you're doing it. We need to send a message loud and clear that we do not want more landfill expansion. Do we want two times more the older than we get now, that is just terrible? I mean, it is awful. And how long will these off-gases continue? 10, 15, 20 more years? And I've known, I've went out there to witness the dust coming from old trucks when they dump, and it just cascades out. It gets on the trees, gets on the grass, and you get a few, and then you get double a smell. It's basically a public nuisance. It's basically a public nuisance. Our former board of commissioners, they sold us out in 2011. They took the money and run. Please be fair and honest, and don't sell us out again. I hope you accept these comments in the constructive spirit in which they were intended. I understand that you are in a difficult and enviable position due to the circumstances and pressures you face. Your service to the community, your fellow citizens is honorable and commendable. Thank you.
Thank you for the talk.
Can I ask another question? I mean, he just indicated that stuff comes from out of state, and gets dropped off at your place, and then you pick it up. Is that?
Same answer.
Yeah, I just want to hear it.
Governor, I appreciate you allowing us to answer that. It's, I've never seen Mr. Thompson on our property, so I can't say how you would even know, but no, that is not allowed. We have to process it. It wouldn't make any sense for us to do what he just said. We bring the material in, we process it, recover aluminum out of it, recycle it, put it back in the marketplace. That's what Mr. Thompson is alluding to, is conspiracy theory, idle thoughts, I don't know what the source of it is.
So you don't bring any already processed waste in from any of your other facilities to the landfill?
No. There is no waste coming brought in that's going directly to the landfill. We're bringing in byproducts of other companies, such as larger aluminum companies. We recycle the aluminum that's still in there, return it back, and then we put the byproduct into our monofill. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so you're bringing in processable materials.
Everything, we're bringing in nothing that goes directly to the monofill, nothing.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Yeah, real quick. In this book contains several hundred thousand dollars worth of documents prepared by the two companies. Can you tell me that you missed your estimate of thirty years, as bad as you did? The product is coming from somewhere, because there's no way you could spend this amount of money on a seven-year fill-up on a thirty-year plant.
Mr. Thompson, it's not full. We're trying to get ahead of this. So you're assuming that it's full, as a matter of fact, that's not a correct assumption. There's probably seven, ten years life still there. We're trying to get that extended over twelve. Yes, there was some.
You're at thirty years, you're at seven years.
Gentlemen, at this time, let's, okay, let's move along with this meeting and stuff right now. Mrs. Blankenship, did you want to speak?
Yes. Kate, I have a copy of that in Tom's old stuff, if you need it. I can assure you, I'm Dolores Blankenship, I live at 7031 Hoover Mason Lane, and I'm not speaking as a commissioner, I'm speaking as a resident of Hoover Mason Lane. And unlike some of y'all, and Tom Kenneth tested this, I have been out to the processing plant several times, I've been out to the monofills several times, I've taken kids out there, I've walked over there, I've commented on the amount of it, I've done, I've sat at the diner and heard the comments about they're bringing trucks in from over there, from other places. I've asked Tom those questions, yeah, they buy byproducts from other places and process them there, that's what they do. They process aluminum, they process the TAP too. My concern is this, I want the information to go out that you and I, and don't envy you of what you're deciding, and want to make sure I'm understanding this, because I was here when everybody went through the whole thing, and it was uproar in our town, that it was approved for some acreage, thirty-eight acres, I believe, with five sites, whatever you want to call them, what do you call them?
Phases.
Five phases, which we have not gotten to. They're at three right now, getting ready to start four maybe, when it's full. And they want to expand some other land, there's still some land there that's agricultural, that you can't touch because it's agricultural, and not going into that. And that's what you're asking for has been approved, other than a height. I'm not for the height, I'm not for it expanding, but we approved that, and we did, Lonnie spent a lot of time and money and effort on that, and I remember that, and I got that document out.
We approved the thirty-nine acres.
We approved thirty-nine acres to be done, but there's fifty-eight acres that was approved to be used. We may not have realized what we were doing at that time.
Yep, some of them.
But that was approved, that was approved.
That's correct.
So these people aren't asking, well, I don't mean derogatory, these people, the company is not asking for doing anything. I live right there, I live in between the settlement ponds, the airport, and the monofill. That's a beautiful site, let me tell you. And the smells can get awful, but Kate can assure you and the fire department, when there's a smell, we call. And there's yet to be found a time when they've violated the air protection thing, the pollution protection and that. No, we're not happy with it, but this does not mean they're going to be able to expand somewhere else. They've got to go through the same process to expand somewhere else. Some things we did wrong, and doing it over again, we might not have done it this way, but it's a there, and we have to make TAP and Smelter and Hoover Mason Recycling adhere to the rules that are there, and the guidelines that are there. And that's what I'm asking you to do, to make sure they adhere to what guidelines we laid out for them. Yes, I did post on Facebook for everybody on our road to come, so they would know, because misinformation is the detriment to this whole town. Let one rumor go out, and it's all, you know. I see those trucks too, and they come from everywhere, and I called Tom Grusko and said, what the hell are y'all doing? And that was my exact words to him, and that's been a number of years ago. And they're going down my road, and they're not supposed to go down my road, and when I say my road, that's where I live, and I call, and they quit going down that road. But it takes our action to do that, so I'm asking you to support this board, whatever their decision is, because they're looking at a hard decision to make, for our city. And I don't believe they're going to allow dumps to go all over the city everywhere else without looking, be it any kind of landfill. I mean, a monofill is different from a landfill, but, you know, to take time to go over there, schedule time to go and see it, and see what they're doing. And yeah, I'm concerned about runoff water right now, I'm concerned about runoff water from TAP right now, going back over across Hoover Mason Road there, and we'll see about that, but that doesn't have anything with it going from the monofill. Anyway, thank you.
I got this question from you. From my understanding of, I mean, we can't, we're not approving whether or not they knew the purpose of it, that's always been approved, we need to know about that.
Yes, ma'am, the request is expanded out to, what is it, seventy-five acres?
What I'm, according to what you said earlier, this is something that this board right here has inherited, and that we've got to go along with and stuff, or the city here will be facing being sued.
Well, as soon as they meet the requirements, and I haven't heard anything that says that they don't, so, yes. And I would add that if the applicant were to meet additional space and wanted to move to another area of the city, presumably, they'd need a zoning change, which again, goes back to the city council, and I understand that it happened in 2011, I don't know whether that would happen again, but probably from this experience, the city council would be a little bit more circumspect maybe in looking at that. But as it applies here, they're already there, again, I haven't heard anything that indicates that they don't meet the requirements in the zoning ordinance, and that kind of puts you in a position where it's hard to disapprove the application.
Mr. Thompson, going along with your remark, we're not up here to sell out the amount, but just like I said, and the lawyers advise us, we inherited something that's been handed to this board here and stuff, and...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to tell you something, we got sold out in 2011, and if you read right here, it says the property does include ninety-five point two acres, but the disposal area that we voted on and turned down, and it got voted in with thirty-nine acres. So you're voting on to expand this plant. I'd say nip it in the bud. When my wife and I cannot go for a Sunday afternoon walk because of the southern prevailing wind, it's noted right here in these papers, comes down by the high school, Washington Avenue, Third Avenue, and the stench is so bad. You try to go to Columbia, the stench is so bad. If we double that, you'll have to go to Columbia via Memphis.
Mr. Dean, make sure I understand that there are seventy-five acres that are already zoned heavy industrial.
Right.
They're only using thirty-nine of that, and they are requesting to expand within the seventy-five that is already zoned heavy industrial.
And there's no ninety-five acres on heavy industrial?
No.
No, that is including the agricultural option.
Well, if that's the case, go and take out and just build your landfill, I don't know why you're here.
The zoning ordinance requires them to come.
I want to tell you something, I've been up there with these lawyers, and you know what to say about lawyers.
I just have to point out, I think that the numbers are incorrect, I think that the full ninety-five that Mr. Thompson pointed out is zoned for the landfill. Thirty-nine is being used, thirty-nine is being used. That's all out there, you can expand that, fill out.
Entire site's like a hundred and seventy acres.
That entire site is bigger than that.
That's right.
And we're not including that.
Correct, yeah.
It was two lines.
Yeah.
The numbers are...
Two portions.
Right.
Okay, my name's Tim Davis, I live at 7036 Hoover Mason Lane, which is right next door, I'm the first name. My question is to these guys here, could you define for me the difference?
Let me ask you this, Commissioner, if I want to ask, I'm sorry.
I'd like them to define the difference between the waste that's produced at the site, because I think the spirit of the original deal was, the landfill was to house the waste produced by those two plants, okay? So I would like a definition between what they're actually producing and the waste that's coming off of what they actually produce, as opposed to what they're bringing in, and what's the difference between what they're bringing in, and just, is it a mild process that they're running through, just so they can charge these other guys? This isn't stuff they produce, this is waste from other companies that they're bringing in and finishing, what I'm understanding is finishing the process. And that's not the original intent. The original intent of this deal was that the waste is going to come from Mount Pleasant South, Mount Pleasant Smelter, products that they produce, okay? So I think it's, to me, it's an end around of the original deal, so I would like to expand on that, if you would, that's all I got.
I think it's answering the same question.
It is.
Their business is recycling, they're not producing anything but the products that they're recycling, so they're not, they're not creating anything there, they're bringing products in that they're recycling, and I think we, I think we've spent through that.
I guess my question is, is the product they're bringing in, is it an end process from what y'all do? Is it the same thing you guys do at your site?
Again, please, address the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I'd like to expand on, my first time doing this.
No, I understand.
You know, there's a difference to me, and you're doing the full process, you're taking whatever you're doing from start to finish, okay? And then you've got a waste, because you did it from start to finish, but then you're going through, you know, you're picking it up from somebody else's tree, and then finishing it so you can dispose the waste, that's mine.
So you were understanding, saying it's their waste?
Yeah, that's the original intent, that's my understanding, right.
Just once again, I mean, TAP and Smelter are aluminum recycling firms, the primary materials that they recycle are dross and scrap. Dross is waste material from other aluminum companies that's left in their furnace when they process, when they make something out of aluminum, they sell a product. TAP doesn't make something out of aluminum and sell a product, they get the dross in, they process it through the plant, they take the much of aluminum out as they possibly can, and both at very high recovery rates, very highly regarded in the industry, and then they return the aluminum to their customers. So they don't make anything, there's no process, they make something from which they're they waste, they process what is someone else's aluminum dross or scrap, and send the aluminum back to those customers.
Anyone else?
I've got a couple of questions, I really don't know a lot about all of this, because I remember when they were getting it approved, and the big issue at that time seemed to be the height of the landfill, but I see here they're trying to increase the height of the landfill, so that's not existing.
They've withdrawn that.
Oh, they withdrew that, okay, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Robert, I, hold on just a second. Robert. Before we get into a lot more discussions pertaining to this airport and the height requirements and stuff like that on this, and we're aware that they have pulled it off the board and intend to drew the line and make the height requirement and stuff. We need, as a commission, I think we need to see this, you know, on the final plan.
You can do it that way, Robert and I talked about this a little earlier today, I suggested to him at the time, again, it's up to the planning commission, but it would be possible to approve it subject to revised plans being submitted to Robert. Robert, looking at those plans and reporting them back to you at the next meeting, that he received the plans and that they are appropriate within his purview, so that you could make a notation on your minutes and know that it was done appropriately. If you prefer it the other way, where they reached a minute and you have another meeting, that's fine, but I don't think that serves any purpose, just approving it subject to would take care of that issue.
Well, Robert, so I got one question. As it is submitted, it does meet all the requirements of our ordinance for a challenge.
That's correct, and, I mean, if the, if the, if the commission would like to hear about the site plan, I would give this to Will and let him discuss any questions and details that y'all have, and regardless of that, I think we need to be, actually need to discuss the site plan, because y'all haven't heard about the buffer or anything that's required by ordinance, so that would be my suggestion to the commission, handle it however you see fit, but we do have a representative from Luxon Associates, and I would certainly like to discuss the meat of the site plan, please.
Yeah, let's look at it.
Okay, I'll give it up on, and I'll just defer to Mr. Hager here.
So, we're all of the same understanding that the use has been defined, it's approved, we're really just looking at the site plan and working with the applicant. They have adjusted height at tonight's meeting, they've adjusted the footprint that was of a concern. They've also, I believe, let me know if I'm incorrect here, they've also provided the required landscape buffer in an alternative location that's probably actually more beneficial to the public at large, going to the perimeter along Hoover Mason Road. You know, per the ordinance, you would expect it to be contained on the parcel that's affected, but in this scenario, since they own the parcel to the east, pushing that buffer out's probably actually more effective to the public, the surrounding landowners, things like that. So that's for you to consider as well. But beyond that, the site plan is in accordance with the zoning code. Landfills, monofills, things of that sort are always difficult to capture in a zoning ordinance, because you're dealing with a mound, not necessarily a structure, that's the predominant improvement, Will. But this illustrates the existing footprint engraved, the red, which is altered for their amendments tonight. And then you've got the, what would be required of a buffer per zone code, and then the alternate buffer along Hoover Mason, which is, what I'm saying is probably more effective to the public and to the benefit of the community. Any questions? Do my best.
I'd like to interject also that the buffer we're talking about, it's intensive buffer, it's eight, buffer eight, so it's thirty foot wide, it's pretty intensive buffer, but, you know, like Mr. Hager said, that to put it down the zoning line, so to speak, of the property, better use of that type...
of the property, better use of that type of buffer would be on the perimeter of the entire area.
And I think I misstated it earlier when I said that it's currently permitted for thirty-nine. They're going to seventy-five, but this parcel on the left is how many acres?
Ninety-five.
So that's right. I suppose that you're just looking for seventy-five to be permitted, but there's ninety-five acres. Because you have to have the buffers and the, you have to have the space between the property and mine and everything.
Just to clarify that, I still have a little bit of time. Any discussion from the board here? No. Mr. Chairman, yes, speak. Come on.
I'm sorry to sign out. I guess I should. And sitting here to listen, I live, I'm Billerings. I live on Hoover Mason. I work for fire department in Columbia. And from my understanding, back years ago, back twenty-eleven, the only thing that was gonna be dumped in the landfill was dross. And I just wondered, do y'all know what is being dumped?
I don't have a clue what's being dumped.
Okay.
We're not the regular, like regulatory authorities.
Okay. I just wondered.
I saw a lot of the conversation is going and we honestly can't do anything about that.
Yeah. And you asked the question earlier, why it filled up so quick? I come down to bypass every day from Columbia back to Mount Pleasant, my home. And I know several trucks. And being with the fire department, you'd think if they're bringing a product in that's gonna be processed, it would not be placard. Well, the trucks I follow in are placard. And a DOT placard is a hazardous material. If you look under that placard that's on these trucks, it's dross. To my understanding, dross was being dumped into the landfill. I might be misunderstood, but...
I think the dross is one of the products that they're recycling. He just stated that's what's coming out of the furnaces, the remnants of their process. I'm gonna become an expert.
I just need more understanding myself.
They're not going directly to the facility, they're going into TAC.
And then they're taking that, they're taking that product that they, if they purchased the dross out of furnaces of company A, they're taking that product to their facility, they're processing, and the remnants of that, the waste is getting put in the field. So they're processing it.
And that's what I call the special waste.
Okay. Okay. But they do have the plants to other places. So we was told that there would be no smell. We was told you won't even know it's there. If you drive down the road, you notice the roads. I've had a good friend of mine say he will not drive down the road because of all the salt, the rust on his vehicle. He won't drive down anymore. Of course, y'all know the smell. You smell the smell. So they said that. They said, no, there would be no jobs lost. In two years, there was jobs lost. So I'm just saying, how do we know they're actually bringing, not bringing in the waste material from other places, which is placard, back into this site and dumping it? You know, we had to drive across our scales because that driver has to get paid. So how do we not know, they're not being honest with us on that because they weren't honest with us in the beginning. This supposed to last thirty years. It didn't last thirty years. And I just wanted to bring that up to y'all. And I know a gentleman here, he said, y'all have the right to approve that, but you also have the right to disapprove. You don't have to accept it. I've said it in plenty of council meetings, and just because the zoning says it can do this, they get turned down. And I just want to leave that to y'all. Thank you.
I don't think that's, I don't, from what I understand, that's not, that's not accurate. We can turn it down based on if it meets our zoning ordinance.
Right.
Then our obligation is to approve, is to approve it.
That's right.
You can shake your head, but the disservice is not gonna be done tonight. And I would agree with probably sixty percent of what you told me, that, that, no offense, the process is a nuisance. It stinks. I don't sit in my backyard because of the smell. I'm on Main Street, I get a horrific smell that comes from the smelter. I've got a recording on my phone, five AM a Sunday morning, sounds like a jackhammer going off, sitting at my kitchen table. It's disruptive. It is. That disservice was done in twenty-eleven. There's nothing that we can do now to stop that. So I agree with the stench, with the odor, the potentiality for hazardous materials. I agree with all that. But what would be the disservice now is that if we would break law and then put the city at risk of an additional lawsuit, that would be the disservice.
Make a motion to move it to next month's maintenance? Under advisement. Get some advisement on it.
According to the...
Don't just listen to that smelter bunch.
This is, he's, this is the city, he's the president of the city.
He president the city of Mount Pleasant.
Sixty days.
You know what? You know how, you know how many nights I've sat here and looked at Tom Harden?
It's not a person on this council up here feels good about this. Not a one up here. I was here in two thousand and eleven and seen the parade that went on and all the commotion and arguing and stuff. It's no fire up sitting here and sat and watched that. But like I say, it's not a one on this council that feels good about what's going on here tonight. But right now, our hands are tied.
First of all, I'd like to apologize to everybody here. I just found out about this yesterday and I wanted to go back and dig all this mess up and study it, and I didn't have time. This is all I could get, so...
It's great information, but ninety percent of it is not relevant to this site plan.
Yes, it is. Moving forward, if your neighbor's got a barking dog, do you want him to get another barking dog?
So, 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 so you have a piece of property. When you bought that piece of property, your building envelope was this big. We rezone it and we shrink that down. Are you gonna complain about that? Because if we say that, oh, you're limited, you own this entire property, the entire apartment is zoned heavy industrial, but for practical purposes, you're only, you're buying seventy-five acres, but you can only use thirty-nine acres of it. If you buy ten acres, I tell you, well, you really can, you can really only use two of it. Is that a good deal? Should I have the power to do that?
That's what I'm saying. If I would have had time to go back and research, was the rest of that under M three?
Yes.
Yes. So we're trying to decide, does this, does this meet the criteria of our zoning ordinance? That's it. That's it.
And from what I understand, and everybody knows, you know, I know a lot about this from the past, and y'all know how I feel about it. But from what I understand, if we said no to this, it's just going to court. The court's gonna say yes. So we're gonna spend a whole lot of money and a whole lot of time, and it's gonna happen anyway. That's what I understand.
None necessarily, none necessarily. Maybe they know.
If it fits all our criteria, a judge is, you know, I mean, you can't, you could be right. But y'all know how I feel about it. I feel like we, our hands are tied up here and we gotta do what, what I signed on to do this job. And you know I don't like it, but I mean, I...
I don't think there's a one on this council.
It was already approved before any of us, and I was sitting on that side.
I was too.
And all the crap was going on and I was, one of them that was complaining. My brothers wanted him off his job, but...
I gotta go back to what the airport guy said. I mean, just pay attention to get more information from what the government wants to do.
My concern was basically about supply lines.
Mine too.
And I mean, that was my legal standing, so I was concerned because that was the only thing that we actually had to deal with. And that subject is off, it's not enough. It was already...
When they took that off the table...
Yeah, it was already there before he was back here.
I mean, if that had stayed on the table, I would be, you know...
That's off the table, is what I'm understanding.
I mean, and the proof of that, of course...
Like the height is off the table?
Yes.
Right, that's off the table. We have a...
I mean, he said that, I need, I need to be in the motion.
We have to have that in the motion when we pass it. And also the fact that they're not gonna expand it out. Yeah, that, that, yes, sir.
If I could, just a minor point here is that extending the, it's a great thing to keep the height down as low as possible, and it's a great thing to keep the distance from perimeter runway, go away here, go close to the district, goes with group approval. That does not mean the FAA will not say that the enlarged footprint represents a hazard here navigation. I just, that's just a fact. I won't know that until we've got through our stuff.
And one would have...
We can raise the question immediately to them and ask for a determination, but they'll probably say, well, let's study. But that's, that's just something, you know, it's never gonna be not to raise the concern. I just, we don't have that answer.
Oh, I'm Kevin. It won't make much difference here. Again, you're at the sixtieth day, so, and I, it'll be done, the FAA is not gonna be able to do much about this, so...
So when do you, when do you anticipate that study being finalized?
You said a year and a half. That's a good question. That's what you said earlier, a year and a half.
The third plan is extremely aggressive and it calls for two years. We might be able to make it a little faster than that, but a year of that is just EPA itself because there's a creek out there somewhere near runway.
He says there ain't no rush.
So, huh?
He says there ain't no rush because they haven't filled up the first part yet.
Well, I was just asking, that was just my question. When do you anticipate beginning the bulk of the, you know? What would be in question is building up elevation closer to the, closer to the airport. When do you all anticipate that being a reality?
About, sorry?
Along that, that area that's in question, as we start to encroach towards the runway on the airport?
We're not, we've already taken that off the table. We won't go any closer.
Right, right. But with the unknowns that he's speaking about with the FAA, and what they're, I guess looking at a timeline, is this something you all are gonna start next week, filling that up?
No, we've gotta turn up T-DAC. We're pressing the T-DAC, that's probably twelve, what do you think, AJ?
This is, like we said at the beginning, is this is step one of many more to go, right? So we still will within the timeline with the airport. I mean, all that's working out just fine. This is just the first of many steps. To answer your question, we're many years away from even talking about any kind of, like we said, we're already thirty feet below our permitted footprint and we're only, there's plenty of airspace left.
Right. So let's start the... So the airport comes back with their plan, which is being, you're gonna add two years from now, and it doesn't fit into y'all's expansion. Before we go there.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to address with the FAA if that's right, but those are all hypothetical stuff that, that, you know...
Right.
It's a, so...
This also has to go through the T-DAC permitting process, which will take a year or two. And as part of that, they're gonna coordinate with the FAA to make sure...
You may wanna identify yourself, Nancy.
Oh, Nancy Sullivan.
We've been working with, you know, with your perspective as we can. We've already taken now the height increase. We're not in the approach of the runway or any or such, so...
So, I mean, to me, it sounds like the worry about the FAA's decisions and what they're proposing to do, it may be a non-issue.
It may be. Yeah, it may be. And we're, and we're two years up from knowing that. And if they're two years up from starting to move, you know, material into those locations, then they'll have that answer. The FAA does not have zoning authority anyways. The federal organization and zoning...
Right, but they've got the authority, they yanked that, that grant.
They can, they can yank twenty million dollars and they can ask for the twelve million dollars back.
Right. Well, that's, that's...
It's a pretty big, pretty big step right there.
We're more concerned about the air and the water of our children than our family. Like you smell that stuff, you shouldn't be smelling it.
We're not, we, we're not...
Wait a minute, wait just a minute.
All right, we've discussed that. We're not talking about that. We can't do anything about that anyway.
Well, when you, let's turn the meeting, go home then. You can't say what you can't do.
Well, I think we're getting ready. We're working to that point. We're deciding, we're deciding on...
You can't do nothing, you need to quit and go home.
Look, we're doing the best we can. We're doing the best we can with what we inherited here. Like I say, not a one up here is happy with this situation. But at the same time, I don't wanna tell the city, and I don't think one up here, a member of this board, maybe wants to put the city in a lawsuit right now over this.
Yeah, I understand that, but we don't wanna smell this crap either. I don't like it myself. I just like, I gotta write a check to it, see? You just gotta write, you don't wanna hear it during the meeting. I'm more smelling it and I'm more dealing with it. And we know what's going on. Ain't no conspiracy. But we'd be better prepared next time we come, gentlemen. I appreciate you, I do. I know it's a hard job.
I know very much.
It's a hard job. Let's go home. We accomplishing nothing.
Because that's what you say. Any further discussion?
Do you hear anything? Do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion if we approve the site plan, provided that we, you know, get documentation about pulling the encroachment on the airport runway and then we're going back to the original...
True type.
Seventy-six, yeah. That would be something we have on the agenda for the March meeting, so that you can, would show in the minutes when you repeat that.
Again, my suggestion would be that the police have planned to be turned into Robert. Robert should review them and then report back to you in the next meeting.
Report back to the commission. Yep. I'll say it. Have a motion in a second. Do a roll call vote.
Ms. Grandary?
I vote yes, the way that it is, because it's a character of, and I'm not willing to take the court if someone's already giving it up.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Cheltner?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have one more question on the buffer. Nancy Sullivan, there was an optional buffer. Does that need to be in the meeting?
Most, most, yes, it does.
Make sure that, I can't hear that in the, possibly, if Nancy...
So the motion, there was, there was two options on the site plan?
Oh, so with the, moving the landscape buffer to the...
Out of perimeter?
Yes, to the outer perimeter.
Okay.
Oh, that's what the motion was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Number nine, old business?
There is none, Chairman.
Ten, other business?
None.
And eleven, board and staff comments? Any from the board and staff?
Let's thank everybody for coming out tonight.
From thirteen, now your motion for adjournment?
Yeah.
I'm gonna pass you up. Mayor White?
Okay, you've got, you've got two minutes about you.
We'll take this and we'll take thirty seconds. First of all, I know that this has been a very decisive part of this community for over ten years and we're trying to handle that much more professionally this time, and I appreciate everybody's candor and I appreciate how you presented yourself tonight. This group of ladies and gentlemen right up here have a very, very difficult job. And I wanna personally thank each one of you for what you're doing. You're not gonna get a lot of that in a tough situation, but thank you very much for what you're doing. Everybody have more thoughts?
I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion if we adjourn.
Have a motion. Sacrifice adjournments.